Newport, pardon me, Newport City Council Special Meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. I apologize for my scratchy voice due to some allergies. I am not saying, okay, it's just an allergy. President at the meeting, Councilmembers, President John Wilson, Councilmember Kevin Shabina, Councilmember Chris Vishon, Councilmember Clark Curtis, staff members, City Clerk and Treasurer James Johnson, interim City Manager Karen Gervi, Bea Zoom is Programs Director of the Ekitarium. Additional staff members, I have Tom Bruniara and Frank, I know Frank was just in, but Frank Cheney, am I missing anybody? I'm sorry, say it again.
Travis.
Oh, where's Travis?
You're never bothering me. Hold on here, hold on, click here, review, sign your lease. How far along are your roommates getting this done?
Mr. Forster, we can hear you, thank you.
Do you understand the risk?
It's a risk. Thank you. Thank you very much, okay, and I'm sorry, but forgive me, I did the session. Oh, okay, and please Chief Travis Finkham, thank you, thank you Travis for being so patient. Okay, so before we start tonight, I'm going to just give you a quick little mayor comment. It's necessary to have this special council meeting due in part because some requested updates weren't given to us timely and sometimes the failure to alert the council to immediate deadlines and other information regarding contracts can become an issue. So I'm very grateful to the hardworking city staff who has brought these matters to the attention of the mayor and the council members after the last regular council meeting. I want to thank them and I want them to know that their diligent and thorough hard work is not only appreciated, but clearly identified is that they understand the responsibility and importance of their positions and keeping the council members up to date. Is this type of work ethic that will keep Newport City a wonderful place to work and live? And again, I thank you all. Okay, so the next, pardon me, okay, the next item on the agenda is additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. I'm sorry, say it again. Yeah, I did. I can do it. So additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? President Wilson, do you have anything to say?
I move to add, consider employment status of the interim City Manager to tonight's agenda.
I have a motion for consideration, do I have a second tonight?
Just curious, may I recall on the agenda?
It would go down at the, just before the adjournment, after all business.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
I have a mayor, will that be an executive session?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
Okay, so when we get to that point, we'll discuss that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those ayes, nays, and ayes, and I vote aye, so we will add that to the agenda.
Madam Mayor? May I have a roll call?
Yes, we may.
Roll call?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Does any other council member have any additions? Any additions, are we good? Okay, we're now going to go into public comment. Okay, we are going to actually be opening the floor to public comment for each agenda item. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City Council meetings are the only time the City Council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City Council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the City Council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting, and I thank you for that. We are now going into comments by the public. When your name is called, please speak into the microphone, which I have, and state your name, residence, and/or affiliation. You will have two minutes for your comment. Ms. Ikankoko.
I can talk loud enough, I don't think I need the mic.
Go for it.
I just wanted to say that I'm thinking about last week's or last meeting and a couple of other meetings beforehand, and it saddens me about the animosity and the anger that's been going on around, and I think that for months now, there's been some chaos and disarray, and I'm hoping that people will be willing to do a fresh start and have a more positive way of looking at things. And in that, when it comes down to gavel gate, I wanted to present you with a solution, and that's an alternative in case ever you bring another one home, you get another one here.
Thank you. Is somebody timing? Ms. Bierling?
Jennifer Bierling, Newport, Vermont. Most of my stuff is questions. Number one, I would like to know who authored the City Manager job description. I sent an email twice and did not get a response, and the press asked at the last meeting, the mayor cited attorney-client privilege and did not answer the question. It's a public document, and the taxpayers have the right to know who authored it. So I would like the name of the attorney or attorneys that participated and the names of any council members that participated in the drafting of this public document. The second item is that on that job description, there is a footnote on page one, and it reads, "In accordance with the City of Newport Charter 24, Appendix, Section 7-7, the mayor is a member of the City Council, and all references to City Council herein also refer to the mayor." So what that does is it basically causes that job description to be such that anywhere the words "City Council" show up, you can substitute the words "the mayor." And the problem with that, it's a violation of the charter, because in the charter, under the City Manager section, it refers to the council and it refers to that body. It's not referring to any one individual, it is referring to the council when it acts as a body collectively being the Board of Aldermen and the mayor. So I would like to know how the City Council proposes to cure this violation of the charter. The next item I have is that according to the interpretation that took place at the last council meeting, contracts can only be executed by the Board of Aldermen and then signed by the mayor. So historically, that has not been the case, and I would like an inventory of all the contracts that have been executed illegally, and I'd like to know the amounts of those, and I would also like to know if the attorneys, Sitzel, Page, and Fletcher reviewed those documents, reviewed those contracts, and specifically what attorney in the firm reviewed them. And then the last item is that with this new job description, the City Manager's position has been stripped of supervision, evaluation, discipline, and termination. So there's ongoing work in that regard that needs to take place. So I've made you all a copy of the personnel policy, as well as the collective bargaining agreement with the union, and I'd like to know from the council when you all are going to start doing this work now that you've put it in your wheelhouse.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good reading for the weekend.
Ms. McIntyre?
During the last, Claire McIntyre, Newport, during the last four to six council meetings, I've been encouraged to hear open acknowledgement of disagreement, when accompanied by information and explanation. This is a very helpful thing. I obtained new perspectives and a greater depth of understanding. Please continue this. I will listen and consider what you say. I may still have questions, but I will not attack you. Second, it was heartening to hear community appreciation for the idea of bringing people into city organizations who come with new perspectives and ideas for consideration. It was heartening to also hear community appreciation for a city employee helping a neighboring community during an emergency when area staff was spread thin. Please continue to share these stories to remind us that we do agree on many things and that we are willing to help each other and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The following updates, you know, were requested, and these are just a few, were expected during term prior to when I came here during the entire term of the interim City Manager to date, and both the mayor and the president of the council and other members of the council have requested some updates. We inquired as to the status of the advertising and interviewing for a higher chief. We asked for updates on all city business and the status of full description of grants and the timeliness of monitoring the grants and city business since June 2023. The mayor and the president of the council and council members also requested written updates that were to be supplied to the council since retention of the interim City Manager in June 2023, not limited to answers requested on August 1, 2023 by Councilmember Curtis. Some of this information has not been provided to date. I would like to congratulate reporter Chris Roy on 32 years of being a reporter, but further, I would like to thank reporter Chris Roy for identifying the potentially dangerous sidewalk issue, and I'd like to thank Mr. Briniara and his team for immediately addressing that issue once the mayor forwarded the information to him. This is the type of open and timely communication that is expected in Newport. Residents and the mayor and council members and the city employers all working together to make Newport the safe and welcoming city that we want to continue. So I'm asking that we keep the message strong and that we don't just drive through Newport and that we make Newport a drive to Newport City. The next item on the agenda is item number three, authorization to advertise for the position of City Manager with an anticipated vote. Do I have a motion to discuss this? Motion?
I'll make that motion that we authorized to advise for the position of City Manager.
Sarah Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment from the public?
I'm just curious what the cost of it is. I know that Mr. Johnson in the meeting back, I think it was the 11th of September, mentioned that the cost was up to $10,000 and growing at $700 a week. So is it still $700 a week?
So.
No, I think that was correct.
Yeah, that was incorrect, it was corrected. That was incorrect information.
So what is the cost?
I neglected to add in or take out Laura's salary on that. I haven't figured this out.
But I mean, what is the cost per week? I'm assuming we're going back to MRI?
Please don't make any assumptions, but thank you for your comment.
I haven't figured it out. I haven't done anything on that since that.
So, any further comment?
Are you going with a search firm again?
We haven't made that final decision yet.
So we're going to vote on.
We're going to discuss, the council's going to discuss. Yes?
Do you have a timeline? We probably haven't decided that yet either, like a timeline?
No, we're actually going to start our discussion.
Okay, I was just.
It's okay. Yeah, it's okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Doesn't this item, depending on the outcome, negate the need to consider our future employment of the interim City Manager?
Now, the two distinct things, one is contracted, in play right now, in a different job description. This is to advertise for the permanent City Manager. But when we get to that agenda item, we'll understand. So right now, what we need to discuss, I would hope we need to discuss is the advertisement, soliciting candidates, the expected cost, and reserving, the council should reserve the right to reject any and all applicants, and to offer to appoint any qualified individual regardless of whether they submit a formal application for the position in case you've identified somebody that you would like to be considered. So you're just trying to get a discussion going here, so that you can all speak about this issue.
I'm not sure I'd be comfortable appointing somebody without some form of application or interview.
Oh, right, and I'm saying you don't have to, you might go through a headhunter, you might not go through a headhunter, I'm saying you can do applicant applications different ways.
I understand, I'm just saying I'd be comfortable with that aspect.
Would our current interim City Manager be eligible for applying?
Anybody is eligible to apply. Anybody who meets the qualifications is eligible to apply, yes.
So she would have to go through the application process again?
Mm-hmm.
My assumption would be that we would go through a headhunter association or group, as we did before.
Right, I just don't know if you all want to use the same one. So, you know, that's open for your choice, and we can discuss all of that, and then you can come up with a dollar cap or a dollar value depending upon who you choose.
Would we be talking, possibly going for VLCT this time?
We definitely would do that, there are several VLCT, there is, there are some that actually work for VLCT as well, so you can kind of, you can save some of the step dollars so that there's not an overlay of dollars there, and you may consider using the same one that you used or.
Because last time VLCT was too busy to help us.
They're not too busy now. Okay.
I'd be comfortable with VLTC, there you go, all those acronyms.
So I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
What's the motion?
Well, the motion was that.
To advertise for the position of City Manager.
Through VLTC or?
Well, we haven't identified exactly, would you like to offer a friendly amendment or would you like to?
I'm just, how do we make that connection with VLTC?
You could say, you mean, how do we contact them?
Right.
We've already contacted various people, VLCT, when the mayor and I met with them, I mean, when the president of the council and I met with them, they were telling us about all their services, and they identified that that was one of their services.
Correct. Was that shared with the council, when that information came in?
Yeah, I did that the last meeting, I told you that we met with VLCT and they offered all the trainings and all the services that they could do. We weren't specifically talking at that meeting about this because it wasn't up at that point in time, but they did identify that they have all these services and they're open to as much as we want to use their services.
And would that be in a form of a contract, or that we need to do beforehand before we, are they doing the posting or is the City of Newport doing the posting?
I haven't, we haven't made that decision yet, that's what we're all talking about right now. So there's no concrete decision as to who, why, or where this point in.
So I guess I'm not being correct, but why I'm asking this question is, the motion should have these components in it.
Right, and that's why I said we'll do a friendly amendment and add these different components. Now, you can just say would be one of the options, it doesn't, you know, because you may want to use somebody else.
Well, I'd like to think that the first option, just in case they do, like Johnson get busy again, maybe leave that open ended.
Okay, so can I have a friendly motion, a friendly amendment that says that the council directs the Programs Director to advertise the position of City Manager to solicit candidates for the position and expend up to specific dollar amount, 10,000, 5,000, 8,000?
I was trying to remember numbers the last time. Does anybody remember the numbers for MRI?
10.
Where's 10,000?
MRI was much cheaper than 10.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like 1,500, MRI.
Rebecca, can you hear us?
Rebecca, are you there?
Rebecca, can you hear us?
Why, they all have a little cross.
That's the beat.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute.
So do, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I know you mentioned VLCT, and I know when we reached out to them back in May, I believe they were too busy to do this, that's why we went with the other firm.
Do you recall the dollar amount for MRI, Becky?
I think we've only paid them a few thousand dollars, I don't know if they've finished billing us yet.
So I think you can anticipate that VLCT would be approximately up to $10,000.
Yeah, I just don't know if VLCT has the capacity. I know they did months ago.
Yeah, they did, they do now.
Okay.
I'm letting you think.
I'm just wondering if the council feels for another as well.
Which is better?
I'd say no more than $10,000, that's what we were prepared to spend with the other.
Councilman?
Nine, 10.
Capt, captured 10,000? So then may I have a friendly amendment that says that, a motion that the council directs the Programs Director to advertise the position of City Manager to solicit candidates for the position and expend up to $10,000 to VLCT to do so, and that such advertisements will advise that the council reserves the right to reject any and all applications and to offer to appoint any qualified individual regardless of whether they submit a formal application for the position?
I'm not comfortable putting that last part in.
Okay, so can you just?
It's just that accepting an applicant, or accepting, appointing somebody without any form of application or interview.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to read it one more time, is that all right?
We had the motion, but there's always a possibility that VLCT could be too busy again, and then Programs Director would have to look for other people.
Or we can say first choice VLCT. We can say first choice VLCT?
Correct.
Okay, motion, amendment, please, to move that the council direct the Programs Director to advertise the position of City Manager to solicit candidates for the position and expend up to $10,000 first choice using VLCT, and to move to other recruitments or headhunters thereafter, and that such advertisements will advise that the council reserves the right to reject any and all applications and to offer to appoint any qualified individual of said position.
I think I'm okay with that. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I have two.
Right, get into it.
I only threw that out so we could have some discussion, but I'll withdraw whatever I say.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, so your motion holds. Do I have a second?
Is that on the withdrawal?
Yes. First, no, first I have a, you have your withdrawal, I have your withdrawal, so I need the second on the two withdrawals first.
I'll second Chris's motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, say aye. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried, and I totally apologize for my delay of voice, I really do.
Do you want to call?
I'm sorry, oh no, I'm good, thank you, thank you, Dan. Yes.
Representative Page, go ahead.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't see you.
I'm just wondering whether, is there going to be a public comment regarding this?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have, I have everybody, because we have three things going on right now. Okay? Yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, $10,000 to do a search for a new City Manager, why can't we advertise locally? Why can't we advertise on the city's website for such a position? Why do we have to expend $10,000 for another search? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, any other comments? Yes?
Just one, what are the qualifications or where are they specified?
They posted it up on the website.
What description?
The City Manager, is there still a requirement that the person lives in Newport?
No, that is not required.
It's never been a requirement.
Yes.
Does VLC charge?
Does VLC?
Is that part of your membership? Do they charge for the service?
Yes.
Less than the other place, I assume?
It varies, like they will submit a package to us, and then they'll look at the package, and then now that we have our cap, you know, we can see what they'll do, whether they're going to go and be aggressive in searching, whether they're just advertising, and each thing will have a cost factor to it, so.
I'm just curious.
Sure, of course, of course. Yes, Ms. Stone?
Jane Walsh, when I was researching some recent City Manager positions in State of Vermont within the last two years, they all used services to recruit.
Okay, so you have our motion. Do you have the motion that?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Okay, and we have our second. And we have our vote. Would you like our vote again?
No, no vote.
No, we don't vote.
I know, but I'm saying, you're, you're right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the Causeway Streetscape and Traffic Signal Removal and Replacement Project. And to consider the approval of a construction contract with an anticipated vote. Mr. Britney? For yours.
Thank you, council. Just want to give you a brief little history as to why we're here with the Causeway project. So, back in two thousand seventeen, the city hired StanTech, an engineering firm, to do a intersection study. That involved Main and Field and Second, Third in Main, and the Vista Garden Park entrance. Causeway traffic lights were put in and installed when the I ninety, or one ninety-one interstate was built. The state did it back in the sixties. It's very old, we have issues with it. Wire, everything is sixty years old. So, that really is what prompted us to look at that, that whole road as a project. Back in May of two thousand nineteen, the city received a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar Northern Borders Regional Commission grant for the Vista intersection. March of two thousand twenty, we hired Lamarr and Dickinson to do the design of Causeway project for twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. In June of twenty-one, the city received another grant from USDA in the amount of one hundred and nineteen, six thirty-seven. Since that, the project kind of evolved, not just the Vista intersection. We started looking at the whole road as a project. We looked at the East Main and Union Street and the one ninety-one access, plus the streetscape lighting. Created a major project to enhance that whole causeway area. We did our first bid, opening was on June twenty-first. The lowest bid was one point three million. Second bid was just over one point four. And the highest was over one point seven. First two low bidders, they didn't meet the criteria and had errors in their bid, so they were rejected. In reality, all three of them were outside of our scope of our cost for that project. So, we decided to rebid it. I sat down with Roger Dickinson, who was no longer at Lamarr and Dickinson. He actually joined with Trudell Consulting. And we looked at re-scoping the project. So, I looked at what my crew, myself and my crew could do on that project to try to bring the cost down to something that the city could afford and still manage the project. So, we rebid it, we went up to bid in August. We had one company that bid the first time, Electric Light Company out of Netic Main, with a total bid of their portion of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. So, Electric Light Company, their contract's gonna consist of mobilization, temporary traffic control, new and removal of the old signals at all three intersections. And that's it. They're just gonna be doing the mast arms and the traffic light controls. Within that bid process, we removed out of their bid five hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. That portion, the city crew is gonna take on and do. So, out of that portion of that project, there's ten electrical junction boxes, removal of three junction boxes, Union Street left turn lane, seventeen new streetlight assemblies, which includes concrete pedestals, light poles, and the light head luminaires. Three thousand twenty feet of linear feet of inch and a half electrical conduit, two thousand seventy linear feet, two thousand seventy. Two inch electrical conduit, hundred and forty feet of two and a half inch, forty-two feet of eight inch conduit, and three hundred linear feet of ten inch. The bigger pipe are the ones that are gonna be crossing their actual sleeves, that will be crossing the Causeway itself. So, in essence, we are gonna do all the groundwork. They will pull the wires through the conduits. But their work is contingent on ours. If we don't get ours done, they won't be able to do much. How we're gonna budget this? So, the process started a few years back. So, two thousand nineteen and twenty, we budgeted forty thousand dollars for engineering. Which, with L and D's first initial engineering at twenty-eight thousand, we were under budget. Following years, two thousand and nineteen, we had assigned funds that were left over in construction and paving, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred dollars that we put towards this project. Twenty twenty-one, we put eighty thousand in, and this is all capital, capital monies we've set up for these projects. Twenty-one, twenty-two, we put a hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-three dollars. That same year, the Coventry Street Sinking Fund, which we had set up, I'll talk about this a little, I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But anyways, we took the remaining eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and put it towards this project. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we put eighty thousand, twenty-three, twenty-four, we put eighty thousand. So, we currently have seven hundred and thirty thousand, eighty dollars set aside of city funds for this project. So, between the MBRC and the other grant that we have, we've got three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So, if you take away that out of what Electric Light Company's bid at eight seventy-six, two sixty, there's five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars remaining that'll be paid for by city funds to fund their portion of that, of that project. So, the remaining two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars is what I will be initiating to order the light poles, the heads, order the concrete pedestals, and all the materials to initiate that project. At this point, because we haven't ordered or done anything, I really don't know what the cost is gonna be. I may have to come back during budget season and say, hey, in our next budget season, we may need to put an additional chunk of money in there, maybe another eighty thousand to cover those costs. I'm not sure at this time, but we'll find out shortly, once we sign and we start moving forward a little bit. This project really is kind of in the grand scheme of things. So, we did the initial StanTech study. With that, we did, we got a Downtown Transportation Fund grant awarded in two thousand nineteen for eighty-five thousand. And that's how we rebuilt the Field, Main, and Second Street intersection. During that time, we also got a Downtown Transportation Grant for ninety thousand, five hundred. It was, is a fifty-fifty grant that matched replacing all the streetlights on Main Street, all new light poles. They were all put in back in ninety-four, and they'd lived their useful life. I have another grant that we received, and I've also hired, we'd hired Trudell Associates to work on this with us, was for the Coventry Street, Main Street traffic light, to update this one down here. The benefit of having them all done at once, the Causeway will greatly enhance our flow of traffic. Main Street might, if we start to really see growth in the city. By renewing everything with the technology, we'll be able to link all these traffic lights together. So, say when the school's getting out in the morning or at night and the flow of traffic slows down, we can have, we can change the timing of these lights on the Causeway to get the flow moving better in the city. I forgot to mention that part of this with the Union Street, we're gonna put in a third lane. So, when you come off Union Street, you'll have a left turn lane to go up East Main Street. With that, the road is wide enough. We are working with the current property owners of that house that actually the school's working on. So, if I can secure a grant, we're gonna get a, we'll build another retaining wall in hopes to set it back a couple of feet to help for the truck traffic that hits the Columbia Forest products. As I said, it's wide enough, but a couple of extra feet would certainly help us out in that situation. Anyways, I didn't mention, so we get the two hundred, we got a two hundred thousand dollar grant for the Coventry Street traffic light project, which has been initiated. Think I've covered everything? I think part of the scheme of working the Derby Corridor down through the Causeway, I did mention, and I want to throw this out there, because I did mention Coventry Street. We did a design back in two thousand and ten for a streetscape design for Coventry Street. It really started out as water and sewer, because our water is undersized and the sewer is over a hundred years old. I visualize Coventry Street as part of our Main Street with pick and shovel. So, we'd started sinking fund for a couple of years and it just, it died off. Council stopped putting funds there. Hopes we can start looking at maybe some grants that possibly could renew that a little bit and move that forward, once the lights at Causeway, I mean, Coventry and Main are completed. Would be very nice for our downtown area to enhance that street, so. That's all I have. This project needs to really move the Causeway, I think we'd stress that. I was on vacation, we had a meeting with the contractors and they stressed that the timeline of materials nowadays is scary. It is for everything. We ordered a dump truck last December, and I'm not gonna see that, last I heard, maybe spraying. So, this could be critical if we can't get materials here. And I'd really hate to see after all this work, we lose these two grants. Any questions? Mr. Walsh?
Along the Causeway, you mentioned basically lighting, 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 and wires. Didn't you also say the sewer there is about a hundred years old along the Causeway? And the longer, or is that just Coventry Street?
You know, if I was gonna replace every, well, that was just Coventry, because
Okay.
we were, the water main on Coventry, that's really what initiated, was the water main. Go back a little bit in history, back when I worked with John Ward, the state, we had to do a study of our water system. And they forced us to put us on a timeline, because some of our mains don't meet the standard. So, we don't get five hundred gallons per minute coming out of a fire hydrant for fire flow. That initiated the Western Ave project that we actually did ourselves. Currently, I have Seis Avenue, which was the next big street on the list. Seis is only a six inch water main, and it's heavily populated over there. That project is completely designed. And there is some funding that we currently are sitting on that may move that project forward sooner than later.
And not to scare people, but I think ten years ago, you told me that West Main is gonna need an entire
West Main is actually, is in the same boat with Seis Avenue. So, that will be the next big street. That's why I've said, not to put everybody off for paving, but I hate to pave a road. I may have to shim it, overlay it, but I hate to throw money away.
That's why I told you, drive over that side real slow.
Try to be aggressive with a fifteen-year plan, and we're probably already ten years into that plan. So, we're already probably five years behind what we told the state. But it all comes down to money, what can we really afford? So.
So, we have the whole project, and then the one for the call-off, that's a separate contract too. So, we're just going forward with the first one.
Which one, what are you talking about? The next one on the agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's nothing, yeah, it's nothing to do with this.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to know, is it possible, would it be less expensive, and is it doable to do maybe one or two roundabouts instead of traffic lights?
We don't have the area for that. They take up quite an area for roundabouts. And that was actually looked at, actually, the state actually is holding, they got what the program is, but Railroad Square, it's in the state's hands. And if they were to do that, they'd have to buy up every piece of property there, and possibly Parmalet Park. Do we really want to give up Parmalet Park?
And they also, the state came back and said, we didn't do the roundabout. Stoplights, you know, about twelve stoplights down there, that's the last thing we need. They are expensive, especially when one goes down. So, move the roundabout out. And then, the other one going into Gardner Park, state want a roundabout there? Well, you've got railroad tracks that are not gonna be moving. So, that's, you have the great dreams, but it's not happening.
Yes, yes.
I think Tom gave you a great breakdown of everything in the logical order of things. I said one question, on the second bid, which is with the lighting company, you had mentioned before that bid that you made changes to the bid specs. Were the changes then also made again after the second bid was accepted?
No, the changes were a change in scope of the project. So, I sat down with the engineer and said, okay, how can we, what can we take out of it that the city can do to actually make it affordable? So, when they bid it, they bid the full price for everything. Their bid was over one point four million. But there was an alternate section, which was the stuff we talked about that we could do. And so, their bid is the eight, seven, eight, eight, seven, some odd thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, go on.
This no longer includes trying to align Gardner Park with
No.
with, because I know there are issues dealing with the railroad from some of the history that I know of.
We tried that, and really why we got held up was by the railroad. And they finally just said, well, you know, it's gonna be fifty thousand just to talk to us. So, we kind of scrapped that idea. The intersection's always been pretty safe, there hasn't been a whole lot of accidents there. So, we felt it wasn't really worth trying to go there.
Especially fifty thousand just to talk to them.
Yeah. They were very hard to deal with.
Your choice.
So, I just, to follow up, I know there were some questions regarding the grants that were very specific. So, just to reiterate, so when the first bid came, there were no bid alternatives, there were no alternatives in the first bid that were included. So, it was an all or nothing bid, and as Tom explained, the bids came in well over the budget. So, the second bid that went out had alternates in it, alternatives in it. And that's what Tom meant when he said he met with the engineers, pulled out pieces, and what was ultimately based, bid on was the base bid for the traffic signals by Gabe, the company that was ultimately selected. That was the only one that bid, I should say. I want to say that everyone was reached out to from the first bid process to bid again if they wanted. But they were less interested because, of course, because with the alternatives, there was a much smaller process. Where that dovetails with the grants is that there was never a change in the scope of the project, but there was a change in the scope of the contract. So, that was the distinction with regard to both the USDA grant and the MBRC grant. Both grants, of course, the agencies have been kept notified. USDA is actually required to sign off on the bid specifications before they go out. And of course, MBRC agreed with that as well. So, both granting agencies are up to speed, and the difference is just now that the portion that the city takes on is larger versus what was contracted out. So, that just keeps the grants clean, because USDA will apply to, the USDA doesn't apply to the local work, it will apply It will apply to the contracted work, so.
Some things I'm kind of excited to hear about is that left lane off Union and the lights being like controlled. Because once the high school gets, it's a little, well, gridlocked for Newport. Is there any specialized equipment that you're gonna need to rent or everything that we have?
For me?
Yeah. For our
I don't believe so. The only problem I might have is dependent on the heft of the poles to set them up. But other than that, no. I mean, most of it's ground digging with conduit, ordering all the supplies, putting the concrete pedestals in, which we've done many of them before. We just did when we did the lights, the replacements, we actually added the four down here onto West Main. I always call it West Main, but it might be part of Main. So no, we, the city has most of our equipment and I don't take this the wrong way, but I never factor in our labor. This money we budget is strictly for materials. I mean, we pay our staff anyways, so no matter what we're doing. If it was, if my portion was part of the grant, I certainly, we'd set up our timesheets, we'd track it. So if we had a 50-50 match or something like that. But in this case, it's city funds. We've taken that portion right out of the project.
Correct me if I understand this wrong, but the damage is just because of age and weathering and the heavy traffic flow?
Well, the age of it, obviously, I don't wanna have a failure down there. If I have a failure, have a broken wire somewhere down there, it's gonna be a nightmare to try to find it and fix it. The traffic lights are older and not one of them will talk to each other. So in order to sync them all together and have that third lane work, they need to talk to one another. And it'd be the same thing with Main Street. So if we had a major function going on and we wanted to keep the flow going, we could certainly set it that way if we needed to. I don't know if we'd ever would, but the Causeway, I think, would be
Could be in control of that, like the switch, I guess.
Well, we have, we have a company that services all our traffic lights now. So it'd be something they would, they would time accordingly. You know, we'd have to probably have them have, most of it's all digitized anyways. You know, so with the change of the year and hour change, just like the school, flashing lights at the school, we have to go over and switch it manually. Nowadays, most everything's technology. I'm sure we can, it's all computerized.
Thank you very much.
Go on.
Is the engineer on site daily? What's that mean? Engineer on site daily?
I, they will be on site. I don't know if they'll be there daily. That's something we will have to discuss with them. But yes, they will be on site. They will be signing off on it.
And who is the clerk of the works?
I am.
Daily?
I'm sure once that project starts, I will be there daily.
Counselor, any questions? Oh, of course.
I agree with Chris about the stoplight coming off Union Street. If you stop at that railroad, Union Street, all three lights are red and those other two will turn green. And those cars will be there before that one turns green. Sometimes you have to sit there through a whole cycle to get up the left turn.
I can't correct that.
That drives me nuts.
As is, I can't correct.
Karen, you got a comment?
I guess, just to say that, so we have a very talented public works crew. Tom hires for multiple skills when he hires where he can. And our crew is one of the higher paid, highest paid crews in the state. But this is why. We can justify this as a small community paying them and you guys negotiated the contract. So we can justify paying that to them because they can do this kind of work, which in the end really saves money for the city. I can't tell you, having worked with Tom over the years in developing multiple grants, how much money Tom and his crew has saved the city. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably even closer to beyond a million. And Mr. Wilson certainly knows this. And this coupled with the grants, this partnership over the years, has really invested in the city. And we have some developments coming that we know that we've talked about and planned for that now opening up this corridor, particularly on the Causeway and then as he looks to Coventry Street, this will help our flow of traffic and the growth of our city. And it certainly helps our police department or fire department and ambulance services to have coordinated light signals. So this is just an incredible project that's been probably five, four or five years in the making that I've known Tom and that I and my former organization have worked with the city on. And it's really a terrific opportunity for, to move our growth forward.
Thank you. Yes.
Just one very quick question.
Sure.
Traffic interruption?
As far as during Oh, construction?
Anything
I can't speak for the contractor. Obviously, they have to maintain traffic lights during or traffic control. For me, most everything's on the sides of the road. I do have those main sleeves that have to go underneath the road itself and like every, every other job, we've done something, we'll do it. I'll just block the road off or block the lane off and we'll do it. It's much easier.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the construction contract with Electric Light Company, Inc. for the Causeway Streetscape project funded by a USDA grant and to authorize the mayor to sign the contract subject to final review and approval by the city attorney?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
Motion and a second. I'm gonna throw it back up. Any further comment in the public? For the discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor, please, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried and finished.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Couple of questions. Is Mr. Burney's notes online? If not, I'd like to have a copy of them from when he was reading, it was so straight in my head. That's our service. And what is the time, what is the timeline? When are you looking?
August 30th is our first deadline. That's why we've been really worried about this. Again, I haven't even reached out to see what the light hold, you know, how long it's gonna take me to get our stuff. But you know, the contractor needs to get the mast irons and all the control panels. So it's gonna be very tough.
August 30th of next year.
Of next year.
Are you, Mr. Madam Mayor? So are you looking at doing all the lights at one time?
Doing all the lights at one time?
That's up to the contractor, Chris. I'm sure he's going to. As I said, they're gonna have to maintain traffic lights that are there while they're putting the new stuff in. And they can't do a lot of their stuff until I've done the groundwork. So I'm sure as soon as spring hits, we'll hit the ground running.
Madam Mayor, any of these roads gonna be temporarily closed, partially closed? Or can contractor work when you have a great deal of traffic in that area?
It states right in their contract that they have to have traffic control. Sure, at times, they may have one lane. Hopefully, they're smart enough to realize that, you know, certain times of day, they might all wanna do that. But that's the contract, that's up to them. I will try to minimize the traffic as much as I can.
And keep everybody there.
Keep everybody happy.
I don't think so, Madam Mayor, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, it's number five, bylaw modernization amended contract for consulting services anticipated vote. Mr. Chaney, you are recognized.
Ah, it's pretty simple, straightforward. You've got a contract, amended contract in front of you, okay? The scope and budget is attached to the back. That is pretty much unchanged. What we're really asking for is an extension from January 31st, 2024 to April 30th, 2024, so that they can complete their work and apply the appropriate attention to the issues that's required. There's no change in the amount of dollars. The budget is basically spread out through the end of April. The scope of work does not change, okay? It's just extended to the end of April. All of the original aspects, other than those few items on the amendment, stay in force until the completion of the contract. Questions?
Any questions?
Do you want to just let everybody know that the contractor is gonna be in New Zealand, but there will be no issues?
Yeah, so the Brandy Saxton, who's the consultant, who's been working for, with us for over a year and a half now almost, is moving to New Zealand at the end of this month. The contract has about five grand left on it. That should be more than enough and we're going to do it remotely. Most of it's been remote anyways. And to give a little bit of a further understanding, the end date of the contract is associated with the planning commission's approval, okay? And that first public meeting. It is not associated with your approval, okay? That's a political process and is not part of the contract itself. I see no issues at this time with having her out of the country. And I have consulted with both Karen Garrity at length and the planning commission and they feel the same way. I might add as well, part of this extension and part of the rationale for the extension is that the actual grant will have to be extended as well. However, until I have this contract for Karen, she can't complete that process. And that would be extended to the same period of time. The state has actually indicated that we could request longer. However, we think that we're gonna have this done, or at least to you by then.
Yeah, they had told you that you could go like
Questions?
Can I have a motion, please, that the council approves the amended contract for consulting services with Placense LLC in connection with the zoning bylaw modernization grant and authorizes the mayor to sign the same?
I'll make that motion.
The motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any further public comment? Any further session here? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number six. Vermont Electric Cooperative Town Road Row ROW occupancy request with an anticipated vote. May I turn the floor back over to Mr. Burney?
So what that is, Mr. Wilson, is there's a business going in on, up on East Main, right next to the Eagles Club. There's a laundromat going in there in that little building way in the corner. So they needed to update their services. They had to run a new water and sewer line to accommodate that and power. So that's what that pole is. I mean, for many years, I would have just administratively signed off on it. It's in our right way, but it poses us no issues. Matter of fact, there's another pole maybe 30 feet down the road from it, in line with it. But the EC has changed their, you know, they want council approval on the form. So that's really what that is. I have no issues. It's not gonna pose the city any problems.
May I have a motion that the council approves the amended contract for consulting? Take that back, take that back. I have a motion that the council approved Vermont Electric Cooperative's Town Road Right-of-Way Occupancy Request and authorize the mayor or the interim city manager to execute the request authorizing the EC's use of the East Main Street right of way?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any further comment? Yes.
I don't know if it says on there.
It's the council members, right? It's the council members who will be signing off on it.
Yeah, no, but I just, just wanna make it all, I don't know if it says on there, but I think they've mentioned it, it need to be notarized.
Okay. I'm going to just ask for a friendly amendment to be sure that it is notarized.
So moved.
Second? Somebody second?
One second.
Okay. And the amendment is moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. And we'll do it like right after, right? You have it all here. There's like a whole bunch of them to sign, so I think we should just take it. The next item on the agenda is item number seven, new business. President Wilson, do you have any new business? Councilman Charbonneau? Councilman Michonne?
Couple things, there's, it sounds like there's a couple of fun events happening for Halloween this weekend. And it sounds also like Mr. Brown's, I'm gonna say it wrong, Mike, but Haunted Forest Walk was pretty successful this past weekend. Congrats on that.
Okay?
Yeah, that's it.
Fun answer, Robert?
Yeah, I do. I've got an application for Niles Funds. This person had it before and, you know, you can get it twice in a five-year period. And this person meets all the qualifications, I'll pass it down to the county, we can see it. I just need a motion to approve that.
I have a motion to approve the Niles Funds application.
How about that motion?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Right, two second. Any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Any, any new business? Becca, any new business? I'm gonna take that as a no.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number eight, new business. Did I say, I said new, oh, sorry. Forget that, okay? It's the voice, it's the, old business? As I was saying?
None.
Councilman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilman Michonne?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Ryan?
No, thank you.
Hey, I'm pleased to announce that there will be a mayor's update every other Tuesday on N K T V at 10:00 a.m. This is in addition to our mayor hours where the mayor and the president of the council hold our meetings on Mondays and Wednesdays from 9:00 to 11:00. In addition to the mayor's updates in the newspaper. I want to thank I want to thank everybody for coming to the mayor's hours, for coming to the mayor's hours. It's just amazing, the information and the sharing of your ideas and helping with resources. It's just, thank you, thank you for that, yes.
I'd just like to make a suggestion that hours are nine to eleven, which is very nice for everyone who's retired and not working during the day. So would you consider having evening hours so that the population that's working has equal equity access to you? I understand somebody could call and make an appointment, but that's giving, that's making them jump through another hoop that everyone else doesn't have.
I actually had the original hours as well on Wednesday night from six to eight. And so nobody showed, so I thought I had said I would put them back after. So I would, yeah, but I'm just saying. So I figure, let me get through a couple of weeks and then we'll do it. But I, as you said, people can call for an appointment. If somebody needs me to put it on, Wednesdays is the best evening for me. So from six to eight, I, yeah.
Just making those people go, jump through another business equity problem.
But it was there, yeah, I did have that, so that was actually on there, okay? Okay, the next item on the agenda. Mr. Wilson? The next item.
Before we go back.
Sure.
So that we don't violate anything, why don't we sign these?
Okay, we can do that.
The notices that we are hiding, our signatures. And then we can do. We can assign them to executive session.
Is that where you would test? Do you want me to start with you? I think I need to just do the. This is the, so this is just the twenty-third date, right Karen? This is just the date? Just the date. Yeah, the two different states, right? I just need to put the date on the top of that. Right, and so do you want to start with this one? And this is the one that needs to be notarized.
I'll shoot on that one, James, put the date.
Just needs a date on it. But you see the front page, right up here? Where the blue arrow points in? The blue arrow on the right-hand side? Yeah.
Where you don't need to sign that?
It's just the date. Just the date. There should be a line for the date. It says sign here, but it should just be the date.
It's already in there.
Oh, okay. Typed it in. Okay, here you go. Okay. The right-of-way occupancy request. This is the one that needs to be notarized. Yeah, but I just wanted to be.
Yeah, everybody's like, it's like.
Do you mind if I add the twenty-third here, the date? Do you mind if I just put the twenty-third?
What street is that on, Tom? This right-of-way thing?
What's that?
You want to know what street is on?
What are you talking about?
The right-of-way for the. It's not, you, it's the occupancy requests. For the model electric, what street are they doing on?
That's East Main Street.
No, that, but the right-of-way is not, oh, sorry.
It's the East Main Street.
Hi, I just signed the contract for consulting services for Placense.
Excuse me? Ah, yeah, you can sign that, and it's initialed on the attachment at the end.
Do we all need to sign it?
No. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the addition of the to consider employment status of the interim city manager.
Mayor, I move that the council enter into executive session pursuant to one V S A section three thirteen A four to consider the dismissal of the interim city manager and invite the interim city manager into the executive session.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Rue just raised his hand.
Oh, sorry.
Randy, would you like the city attorney in the executive session as well? If so, he should be specifically invited in the motion.
And to include city attorney David Rue.
Thank you, clerk.
So included. I have a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one V S A section three one three A four to consider dismissal of the interim city manager and to invite the interim city manager and city attorney into the executive session. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
A motion and a second. We are in executive session. Oh, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion is carried, and we are in executive session. Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, I move to dismiss the interim city manager and terminate her contract with the city in accordance with the applicable terms of her contract effective October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three at five p.m.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second? Comment?
Let me get my thoughts together here. What I am witnessing is disgusting. You have a special council with agenda items, and you ran on transparency. I don't see where adding a special item to the agenda to terminate the city manager is showing transparency. I find it offensive, I really do. I don't know what's going on here, but it should have been warned. It should have been something this important. The public should have had a right to have it, see it in the paper, see it warned, see, just to see it, to be able to come to this meeting. Last week, you allowed people who don't know Karen Garrity to personally attack her and question her integrity. And these people, half of them don't even know her. I've worked with her for over twenty years, long before I was involved with the city government, and especially as mayor. And to see what this council and what the public has done has been a witch hunt and is a disgrace. And some of the members of the council, I consider cowards now.
Thank you for your comment.
I'd just like to say that this is an extremely dark day in the history of Newport. This is unprecedented of the, the lack of transparency, the attacks that were made on a citizen of Newport. People, citizens of Newport attacking another citizen of Newport. The fact that as mayor you let that happen, the degradation that people spewed at that last meeting was appalling. And Newport will be in dark troubles because of it.
Thank you for your comment.
Laurie Graham, Newport City. I would just like to make a comment that I originally, as I said last week, was in support of Karen. She and I sat and talked one evening, and I was looking forward to seeing how things would go with the city. And I actually thought that things would be okay. But the more things, more time went on, the more I watched certain people that would come to the city council meetings, the more what I saw was that we were going back to what we just got rid of, which was a city manager who was going to tell the city what to do. And unfortunately, I personally have worked with Karen and was not treated so well that first time. And I made a decision at that point to give her a chance. And I, I just couldn't do it anymore.
I'm sorry, Laurie, we've never worked, we've never worked together.
Ms. Karen? That's why, on a volunteer basis, Karen. As a, as a city member, I was part of a lot of the city things that happened over the last three or four years. And I was told something very personal against me being involved in anything with this city. And that's the reason that I stepped away until now. And I don't want any other citizen to feel the way that Laura Dogan and Karen Garrity have made me feel personally, and I won't put up with it. I gave her an opportunity, and I did not see what they see. And if they didn't want to see it, they should have stayed on the city council. But I think we need to move forward, I think we need to move past this, and I want to be a part of that, and I want to see our city do better.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but, so we have people complaining about attacking people while they're attacking us, which I have a problem. So we know they're probably upset, they have their own opinions, they're right to them, but attacking you is not probably the answer because I'm pretty sure, I don't know what the negotiations have been, what you guys have had to deal with. I'm sure there's got to be reasons somewhere in there, which I'm sure to protect. Ms. Garrity, they're, they're not coming out. But I think the confusion is a lot of people just don't know why. But I assume that you guys know what you're doing, and I respect the fact that it's all been done in executive session. So none of us know what the reasons are, but I'm sure there's a reason. They're just doing it willy-nilly. So I think you being attacked for attacking someone is, is a little bit hypocritical. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
Part of what really upset me at the last meeting was that what was presented was factually inaccurate. And if you're going to make, you know, allegations against somebody, if you're going to take issue with their conduct, my expectation is that it's going to be based in the evidence, and it's going to be factually correct. Mr. Walsh knows that this city council made a decision to not allow political signs on city property. And it was Mr. Pronto that came to the meeting that day, and that was the decision that the board levied. And it was Ms. Garrity who, after the meeting, did not feel right about it. And she said, this is protected speech, and if we are going to allow signs for bake sales in the musical at the high school, we can't start limiting signs on political speech. So she phoned the attorney, and she confirmed her understanding with the attorney. And then she reached out to the candidates, including you, Madam Mayor, and said, you can put your signs on city property. And she sent an email out, and she sent it out to Mr. Bernier and Mr. Bernier's second-in-command. Mr. Bernier was on vacation. And so when he returned from vacation, he hit the ground running and had not made it through all of his emails yet. And as such, he pulled the signs because he was still under the impression that the council's decision was what was in action. All of a sudden, Mr. Pronto and Mr. Walsh phone Ms. Garrity up in arms because she's violating their, their political speech rights and everything else. She said, there's been a misunderstanding, I will be back in touch. She phoned Mr. Bernier, he said, hadn't seen the email yet. Their signs are in the garage, they can come get them, which they did go into. And Ms. Garrity phoned back to all the candidates and informed them there was indeed a misunderstanding, that Mr. Garrity had hit the ground running on Monday for back from vacation and hadn't gotten all through his emails yet. They're more than welcome to put their signs back up. And somehow, that got translated into her intentionally allowing the removal of the signs and her intentional violation of their right to free speech and their intention, her intentional violation of some mandate from the Secretary of State. This was the nature of what took place at that last meeting. And it was absolutely despicable and deplorable. And if you're going to go after somebody's conduct, you really ought to get your facts straight and present them in a transparent and honest way.
Thank you for your comment.
So, since my name was thrown out there, and I think Karen will verify this, I was not all up in arms.
No, you were not, that's true.
It was very peacefully.
And you understood from the meeting.
I never raised my voice once, I was always polite and respectful.
And you knew exactly what happened, is that, I know what happened, Tom, bring that from the case.
And I started laughing about it, we had a good chuckle, and that was it. So you're wrong, as usual. I did not do that.
Any further discussion here? I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I vote aye, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
May, may, may I have a roll call on how each member voted?
Roll call, please.
And why?
Roll call, please.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right. The next item on the agenda is, excuse me? The next item on the agenda is item number ten. is item number ten, adjournment.
Madam Mayor?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the special meeting at nine thirty p.m.?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. I believe Ms. Garrity has a thing.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
I have a discussion after this motion.
Oh, I apologize. If it's, if it pertains to the adjournment.
I don't know what it pertains.
Does it pertain to the adjournment?
I would just like to say goodbye.
Well.
I would just like to make a statement as departure.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjournment, adjournment.
Aye.
Go ahead.
I will sit here and hear Ms. Garrity.
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just need to get the vote. Do I have a, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ms. Garrity?
So just bear with me. I just addressed this to the community as well as to the council. So I came to help. Um, you do the best you can under the circumstances. We know we've had, I'll just stand for this. It's easier for me. I'll just stand. It's, I came to help. We know we've been through, um, transition and turmoil. Um, in, in a lot of ways, being in a community is like sibling rivalry, right? We can have disagreements. I will say, part of the reason that this is happening is that we have a disagreement on the fundamental nature of, of what's happening here. And that's all I'll say about that, except to say that I will stand by my position, and others are standing by theirs. And because there is that difference, there's not going to be a meeting of the minds here with regard to what's happening. And so I have said from the beginning, I'm not here to be a distraction to the work of the city. I was here to help. I, we got us through certain period of time. Um, I'm not here to be a distraction, and so this is the council's decision. They're seeing this as the best way forward. I've had personal conversation with each of them in executive session. I will say that I appreciate the work of each and every one of them on the council. Um, I'm not leaving with bad feelings to the council. I would ask that the community really think about how we as a community can come together more um, and, and stop, stop really going after each other for the littlest infraction. I think there's been too much of that over the last ten or twelve years. And I think that it's important, the only way we're gonna move forward, no one is coming to save us in Newport. We know that. It's us, right? It's our vision of the, of the community. We've had our election. These individuals here represent the vision of our community going forward. I did my best to facilitate. Did I make mistakes? Of course. Um, and I say of course because that was gonna happen in the period of time that we were in with the, with the transition. What I will say, as I said before, there is a real difference of opinion. Uh, I, I firmly believe certain things. Others don't believe the things that I do. They believe other things. And that difference is not gonna be overcome in the work scenario. No doubt, we're gonna sit down, some of us, maybe Mr. Wilson, we're gonna sit down over time and kind of hash out things. Even if we don't, I think we leave with a feeling of mutual respect. I would at least hope that's the case. Um, and I appreciate the good words that council members have said on my behalf in executive session. I ask you as a community to support this council. It is not easy to sit up here, week after week, and be bombarded with the needs of our community. We have substantial needs. And I would just ask that you give your elected officials your support. I did the best in my capacity to do that in my way. My failures are my own. My successes, I hope, are for all of us. That's all I will say. Thank you all very much. And, um, I won't be in this position at the end of this week, but I will continue in my way to help support Newport and to move our community forward, no matter where I am in the world. That's one of my promises.
Thank you.
So, thank you all.
The ayes. Eyes have it, motion's carried, and we are adjourned.